Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Yuba City City Council meeting for tonight, March the 20th, 6:00. Can we get roll call, please?
Mayor Didball?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Vice -- Councilmember Buckland?
You know, whatever title you want to give me. I'm here.
Councilmember Cardoza?
Here.
And Councilmember Cleveland?
Here.
Wonderful, thank you. We will have invocation led by Councilmember Buckland and the Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilmember Cardoza.
If you'll bow your heads as I pray. Almighty Father, first let me say thank you. On behalf of all those that are gathered here tonight, we're truly blessed by your presence. We ask for your guidance and a clear vision so the efforts of staff and council and our community will be of benefit to those that live and work in this community. It's in your most blessed name that I pray. Amen.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we have presentations and proclamations. We have Sutter County Children and Families Commission presentation by Michelle Blake.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Michelle Blake and I'm honored to be the Executive Director of our Sutter County Children and Families Commission. As you may be very well aware, one of our mayor's major platforms for service is to and for the children and families in Sutter County. Mayor Didball exemplified her dedication to improving the lives of Sutter County's youngest children and their families through her service as a Sutter County Children and Families Commissioner. While serving as Commissioner, Mayor Didball helped to create and strengthen a variety of comprehensive services and programs for children zero to five years of age related to systems in education, health services, quality healthcare, and other crucial programming. Please allow me to demonstrate through a short video just some of the services Mayor Didball, along with our amazing staff and other commissioners, helped to provide the smallest citizens of Sutter County in the most recent years. The Sutter County Children and Families Commission is growing a stronger, smarter, healthier Sutter County, one child at a time.
Every child in Sutter County deserves the opportunity to reach their full potential, which is why we provide programs to promote brain development, social, emotional intelligence, safety, and good health.
Families Learning and Play or FLIP is a program that encourages parent-child play, imagination, physical activity, and creativity. This mobile program visits sites and events throughout Sutter County year-round.
Good health begins with a healthy mouth. Our mobile dental clinic visits school sites and underserved areas, offering free dental checkups and treatments.
Our car seat program ensures that child car seats are correctly installed so that families can travel together safely.
Every baby born to a Sutter County family will receive our Welcome Baby Kit.
These kits provide tools and resources to new families, helping them be successful on their new journey.
Our news program is a life jacket loaner program. Offered at multiple boat dock locations throughout Sutter County, families with children ages zero to five can borrow a life jacket for their little one to enjoy a day on the water safely.
Is your child reaching his or her milestones of the right age? Find out in just 15 minutes with our Ages and Stages questionnaire. Our team is here to help you understand the outcomes and create a plan to help your child reach their full potential.
To find out more about ASQ, go to sutterkids.org.
So as you just saw, this video showcases just some of the programs funded, managed, and guided by Sutter County Children and Families Commission. The Commission proudly works together in systematic and strategic ways across agencies and communities to improve outcomes for children and families. This tremendous work wouldn't be successful without the vision and guidance of our Commission leaders, leaders like Mayor Didball. So please allow me, on behalf of the Commission, to deliver sincere appreciation for her time, her leadership, and her true concern for the children and families in our community. Madam Mayor Didball, although your term with Sutter County Children and Families Commission is complete, I know without hesitation that you will continue to demonstrate sustained efforts and commitment to serving our youngest children in their earliest and most significant years, for children are our most precious resource. So please join me up front because I have a little token of appreciation for you. So as we appreciate all of our commissioners for their time and service, could you hold that portion? And I'll read it. Maybe you should hold both. Let's not break it, it is glass. It says, "An appreciation of commitment to Sutter County, zero to five, Preet DeBaul." So thank you. Join me in appreciating her.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
It has been a privilege to be on this Commission and be a part of it. You know, my passion is always with the kids. They are future leaders and it starts as they're young. And being a single parent, it has always been something that I've been really, really involved in. So I'm really thankful that I was on the Commission. But I'm not going anywhere, so.
Thank you.
I'm on the Commission, I'm still in. Thank you.
Thank you for all of your work and service.
Michelle, I don't know who made the video, but it looks, did a really professional job. A few budding little actors and actresses there.
I know.
Yeah? Who did? Odina. It was a really good job.
He was tremendous in assisting us.
Yeah.
Next, we have our public hearing. Our first item is the General Plan Amendment Rezone Development Plan, an environmental assessment for the development of a 38-unit apartment, gated apartment complex located on the east side of Tharp, Tharp Road, approximately 580 feet south of Butte House Road. We have Mr. Rodriguez with the staff report tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Arnold Rodriguez, Development Services Department. The item before you is a request, or it's three different entitlements, all discretionary actions this evening. The first one is a general plan amendment to amend the existing general plan land use for the property. It's a proposal to rezone the property, which is about 4.68 acres, and it's also a development plan to facilitate the development of 38 multiple-family residential units. So this would be an apartment complex. From speaking with the applicant, he is gonna, his target audience is seniors, however, it is not age-restricted in the form of a covenant. Just in terms of background, this project was initially considered by the Planning Commission on October the 11th of last year. Right, or prior to the City Council meeting, we heard from an adjacent property owner, he expressed a handful of concerns. We went back with the applicant, with the adjacent property owner. We resolved those issues and this project was subsequently considered by the Planning Commission at their February 28th meeting about a month or so ago. The Planning Commission did recommend approval, subject to the compliance as outlined in the City Council's report. So again, the request this evening is to amend the city's general plan from the community commercial land use designation to the residential, to rezone the property from the C2 to the R3, and then also again for 38 dwelling units. When Dr. Toler initially submitted this project to the city, it called for 41 units. However, due to the negotiations, the applicant's been required to modify his proposal and that reduced it from, again, from 41 units to 38. So the application before the Council this evening is for 38 units. The subject site itself, it's located on the east side of Tharp, south of Butte House, immediately south of North Market, just to the north of the AT&amp;T complex there. Immediately to the north, obviously, is commercial, to the east is commercial, and then there is the one remaining house that remains there, which is in good condition and immediately across the street is a harder property. In terms of history, the property itself, in terms of land use entitlements, has a relatively long history. It goes back all the way to 2007, when the City Council at that time did approve a rezoning from the R3 to the C2. So we're actually, or Dr. Toler's proposing to go back to exactly what it was about 10 years ago. And at the time, there was an approval for roughly 74,000 square foot gym. That gym has obviously not been developed, and since then, he had requested for multiple extensions. The permit on that expired in 2013. That's simply a proposed zoning change, again, from the C2 to the R3, which would allow the apartment complex. This was the original proposal, which again was for 41 units. The site plan itself has actually turned 90 degrees to the right, so north, and I apologize for this, but it was the only real good way of fitting it on the map. So north is towards me, rather than the traditional facing to the north. So Tharp Avenue here, or Tharp Road, is here, and this is the shopping center, and that's the parking lot from North Market. So again, I apologize, but that was the best way to lay it out. When the applicant first came in, he did have two access points, one of them being through the north shopping center parking lot, which is here in purple, and then Tharp Road. There's a pedestrian access recorded easement right here to the existing Bellar Shopping Center. If you physically go out to the site, there's a block wall. However, you can tell where it's designed to accommodate for it, so as part of this project, they would be proposing pedestrian access through that wall. There is a recorded covenant or easement on the property which allows for that. Since this project was initially considered by the Planning Commission to the more recent action by the Planning Commission, the primary changes occurred on the northern boundary, and one of them being the elimination of that access point and a slight modification in this general area. This is the new site plan, same orientation. So again, the north here, it's rotated 90 degrees to the right, and right here, you can tell that there's, that the vehicle access point's no longer provided. However, there continues to be a pedestrian gate, which is about right here. I apologize, it looks like the pointer just, it's dying or it died. And then all, and then obviously, we would still have the pedestrian access point here to the east. So where the building was, so where the access point was initially located, there is now a building there. And then with that said, there was, again, there was a slight modification in this area right here. That modification was required to allow truck parking or truck access to North Market. That was a private agreement between Dr. Toler and the owners of North Market. In terms of the design of the buildings, they're gonna have tile roofs with stucco sides, earth-toned colors. The apartment complex itself is comprised of both single-story and multi-story buildings. This is an example of a two-story building. We are gonna require, or staff is proposing, a six-foot masonry block wall along Tharp Avenue behind the landscaping, and then it would also have a block wall along the northern property line separating Dr. Toler's property and the North Market Shopping Center, and then we would also require a block wall along the southern property line adjacent to the AT&amp;T complex. This was the original health club that was initially approved. Again, it was 74,000 square feet, and that, this is simply for illustrative purposes, and then again, the project site. So a couple of specific conditions that staff wanted to identify or highlight. Staff is recommending, thank you, dinner. So staff is recommending that the applicant record a covenant, which is an agreement that's gonna run on title with the property, and that covenant would specifically outline the right to farm. There is farming directly across the street. It obviously happens only sometimes, not all the time, but we simply want to be certain that whoever buys this property acknowledges that there is a potential to have farming activity right across the street. We also want them to acknowledge that they are proximate to an industrial area. So again, the site is currently zoned commercial, but however, there are light industrial uses around it, and at the same time, there is a possibility of having conflicts in terms of lifestyles between light industrial and residential, and we simply want to be sure that we're acknowledging that, because again, the light industrial, it's there, it's already planned for it, and they're not changing the land use rather than the residential project is. And then also, we also want to make sure that the property owner acknowledges that there is retail around it, and that there could potentially be some discomfort by future tenants because they're adjacent to it. For example, there's deliveries in the middle of the night or early in the morning. We simply want them to acknowledge that. There is one other item that we've been speaking with Dr. Toler about, and that's a Community Facilities District item. The city back in 2017 commissioned a Community Facilities District study. That condition resulted in, into proposal language in terms of the approximate cost to provide community services in terms of ongoing fire, parks, and police services. That study came back, staff recommended that this council approve a $424 assessment per year, per unit for single-family homes, however, a reduced rate of $310 per year, per unit in perpetuity, per multiple-family residential. Staff is proposing that this condition be incorporated into this project. With that being said, staff did outline a CFD, however, we also provided a couple of options. And also do want to highlight that city staff has placed this condition on six single-family residential developments in the city. This happens to be the first project that's multiple-family rather than single-family where staff is proposing that this condition be incorporated. With that said, it also happens to be the first one that the council's considered since that CFD study was completed back in June of 2017. So the, so the condition itself, and I apologize that it's quite lengthy, but the underlying portion is the area that I want to highlight. So it does articulate a couple of scenarios. One of them is that the applicant would join the existing Community Facilities District, option one. So option two, that the developer could buy payment of cash in an amount agreed to by the city to help secure the funding mechanism acceptable to the city, for again, for ongoing cost. And then the third option, it's kind of wide open. It simply says, "or by some other combination of those mechanisms." So in other words, the applicant does have some options. Dr. Toler did submit a letter stressing his desire to delete this condition. In his condition, he specifically identified the CFD, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I'm presuming that rather than eliminating the CFD condition, he's probably hoping that the condition be deleted altogether, but I did want to identify that. We considered his letter and the staff's position that the conditions remain exactly as is with no modifications to any of the conditions, but specifically that one. So again, so staff's recommendation this evening is to keep the condition as written, which is $310 per unit, per year, which equates to slightly less than $12,000 per year in So with that being said, staff did prepare an environmental assessment. It resulted in a mitigated negative vacillation, and we did incorporate mitigation measures, which are outlined in the staff report. So this evening, staff is recommending that the council adopt the environmental assessment, approve the general plan amendment, approve the development plan, and also introducing the, or an ordinance to rezone the property and waive the first hearing. The rezone application today, if staff were, or if the council were to take action this evening, the second reading of the rezone application would occur the first meeting of May, rather than the first meeting in April. So that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for any questions for staff at this time?
Through the mayor. Arnold, we have a big project going on down on Lincoln Road. How many units is gonna be going in there when they finally get going? Lincoln and Garden?
The apartment complex that was approved for Lincoln, it's 172 units, and this condition was not placed on that apartment complex.
It's not placed on that one?
It is not placed on it because we had not commissioned the study, so we did not have a dollar value to place on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, that's an apartment complex, not individual units, much like what is designed for this project here. Am I correct?
Correct. That's more of a traditional apartment complex.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. So at this time, I'll go ahead and open this to public on this agenda item. If there's any members of the public that would like to address the council on this issue, go ahead and step up to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
I'm Gary Loughlin. Loughlin spent civil engineers, 1008 Leibok Boulevard, Yuba City, and our firm prepared the development plan for this project. Arnold gave a very good review of it, and I'm hopeful that the council can support this project. One issue, the $310 per unit, I kind of looked at it. Dr. Toler has submitted a letter to you. The fees on this project, the permit fees are about, and this is per unit, are about $5,000. Miscellaneous fees are 400. Fire department, 700. Impact fee, 16,000. Sewer, 6,000. Water cap, 8,000. Levy, 2700. Gillseizer, 700. School fees, 4100. And it adds up to about 44,000 a unit. And these, the city didn't calculate these figures, I did, based on the city's fee structure. So we were just hopeful of keeping the cost as low as we can, to hope this project goes forward. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Nope. If not, go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to council for further discussion or motion.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
You know, over the course of time, this piece of property has come before this council on a prior design project in which we looked at and tried to reduce fees for Dr. Toler to build and make that project occur, and that was a health club. That didn't happen. He obviously has looked back and tried to reevaluate where he's at with this, and trying to make this project move forward in some other design, has come up with the current use. I commend him for that. But also, the fees that we look at, and Mr. Loughlin, I appreciate your input, but the fees we look at for the city of Yuba City are minimal, truly minimal. All of the other fees that you mentioned, besides hooking to sewer and water, are fees outside the city, and we have no control over those. But we do have to make sure that we're able to provide police and fire protection and any other services to that complex over a course of time, and that's what the fee has been established for. So with that, I'm supportive of this project, but I'm also supportive of the CFD fees that are attached to it.
Thank you. Any other comments, motion?
If you don't mind. Just really quickly, completely agree with Councilmember Buckland on his thoughts on this. I am supportive of the project. I appreciate the tremendous amount of effort that's gone into the planning. I am not supportive of extra fees unless they are necessary, and I know we've worked, done the math, and it's my understanding and belief that had this not been charged in the future, that it's, it's, it's a not sustainable, because the impact to the city and the fees and the things, the expenses the city incurs to support police and fire and the other things that cover by the CFD would not be a sustainable proposition. $310 is a lot of money to a lot of people, and I am sympathetic to that. However, the cost of doing business is expensive, so I do support it as well.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. We have members of our community in the region that continually call us out for not collecting the appropriate fees to cover the costs. When we were working on water rates, that was one of the things that actually surprised me, that we were not collecting enough to cover the capital investment of the things that we needed to do, and this is a couple of years ago. And while we were trying to not raise rates, we were, and people were complaining about raising rates, they were also complaining at the exact same time, how come you didn't collect enough in the first place? Well, the drought changed a lot of the numbers on us and the implementation of the state. So the problem I have is that people don't want us to charge fees, but then they get upset with us for not charging the appropriate and enough fees to cover the costs, which technically, by law, we are required to, is to collect no more than it is necessary to maintain the services at a level that the community demands. And that is what we attempt to do with our fees, our yearly or annual fees, is to charge no more than absolutely necessary. And we have gone through many different issues trying to ensure that we do not charge more than is absolutely necessary, at least that I know of here in Yuba City over the last three and a half years. So while I don't like it, we have to find ways to pay for the firemen and pay for the policemen and some of their services. So this is gonna, it's a necessary thing for those services, and for us to comply with your demands of service.
Okay. Any other comments? No? And I concur with the previous comments as far as we don't like it, but it is part of providing the services in our areas as we continue to develop and bring in business. So, and I've been a part of that planning commission since 2006 is when I came to the city. So I've seen that area grow, I've seen it go through to various zonings, so it's just something, part of the business that we have to look at, and although we hate charging them, it is something that is required for us to provide those appropriate services for the community. So with that being said, I'm also in favor of moving forward with it.
Through the mayor. You know, again, I'm excited that Dr. Toler has brought this project forward. I think it's a great use for that property. It's a great use for Yuba City. It's a great addition to our community, and much like a project that he is and was involved in over on Richland Road years ago, I think this is a quality project, and I would move staff's recommendations A through D on this project.
I will second that with one last comment. This is one of, one of the good things that we're doing, to live, work, shop, and play. Instead of moving all of the, the living outside of the core areas where the shopping and stuff is, putting locations there where actually seniors can, and that don't want to drive, or something can easily get to locations, or just people that are sick and tired of having a car, they can do whatever they want on that. And, you know, in the areas where it's appropriate in Yuba City, allowing and encouraging landowners to develop housing that does not necessarily need driving, personal vehicles all the time to where you want to go, but making it where they have a choice of being able to just walk a short distance. So we encourage that.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Motion approved. All right. Next, we have public communication. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda. When they are called, public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited if there are large groups, and they are encouraged to select a representative to express the opinions of the group. So at this time, do we have any written requests?
None received.
Okay. So since there's no written, anyone who would like to speak at this time from the public? No? All right. We will bring it back. On our consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council, staff, or public interest request on any particular item to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar on an individual action. Is there anything that anyone would like to remove?
Through the mayor.
Make a motion?
Moved to approve the consent calendar.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Great. Moving right along. We have some general items tonight, and we have the recreational passenger bus. We have a staff report from Brad.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Brad McIntyre, your Community Services Director. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and request council's approval to purchase a community bus. Our current bus is 16 years old, and the last four years we have spent over $10,000 in maintenance costs. Throughout the year, we utilize the bus for approximately 120 days. We use the bus often for our senior trips, that they go on day trips. A good example would be San Francisco, Napa, Apple Hill. Our youth camps use it almost every day throughout the summer to transport campers from Gray Avenue School over to Gauchea Aquatic Park. We have used it for our summer at City Hall program the first year, and it is a backup to use for Uba City Unified Buses. We also use it for our visiting dignitaries, our sister city tour day, and levy tours for our community. The proposed bus will have the ability to carry 24 passengers, which will include two wheelchair participants. This is roughly what it will look like. The only difference is that the lift for the wheelchair will actually be in the back. But other than that, we wanted to give you an idea of what it will look like. We also have a rendering here, which we will wrap it with our logo if it is council's desires. You can see it on the front and the back. We may even give some sponsors, ship opportunities on the back of the bus like you have seen through Uba Sutter Transit as they do, as they go through our town. This is our recommendation as it relates to the purchasing of a bus. And I'd gladly entertain any questions at this time.
Back to council for any questions for Brad.
Through the mayor. Mr. McIntyre, are there other uses for this bus that, especially with a newer unit, that could be utilized, you know, more long-distance type trips, things like that? Or are we in a position as a city to sublet that bus to other organizations, like as in nonprofits within our community?
We would, and we certainly can. It would certainly be determined with insurance liability. We would certainly make sure we provided the bus driver because they're under our insurance policy. And then we would ask, depending on the situation, if it was a nonprofit, to recoup our costs for the trip as well. But to answer your question in short, yes, we could. And it could facilitate a trip to LA if needed so.
And could you give us a little bit of an understanding on the, I guess, the mechanism of mobility? Is it a gas engine, diesel engine? What are we looking at here?
It's a diesel engine, and it is a lot smoother of a ride. It's better technology than 16 years ago. I am not a mechanic, but I want, I believe they're called air brakes. That gives us the ability for a softer ride and to control the bus on a decline coming down a hill.
So special licensing is required to be able to be a driver for this bus? A Class B driver's license or greater?
It is. It's a Class B driver's license.
Okay. And the suspension on this, I would assume is an air ride? Given the dollar figure, it's probably an air ride suspension, which also allows a more comfortable ride, especially for those that have disabilities?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. I have no further questions.
Okay. Any other questions?
And that comfortable drive would be very helpful. I've been on our bus.
Is it the same-sized bus, or did we get bigger? That's the question. More passenger or same size?
It is the same-sized bus, however, it is a little bit longer. Same size meaning passengers, but it is a little bit longer for more comfort.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? And if not...
Through the mayor. Moved to approve staff's recommendation to purchase this bus.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. All right. Next, we have a presentation of our investment report. Quarterly ended, the quarter ended December 31st, so we have Spencer.
Good evening, Mayor Didball and members of the council. I do have the treasurer's quarterly report for the period ending December 31st. The portfolio market value as of that date was 105.4 million. And of that, 99.4 million was of city-held bonds, the remainder were trustee-held bonds. City-held, I should say, city-held investments, and the rest were trustee-held bonds. 6.1 million net increase from last quarter, and of the notable transactions, police solar improvement bond proceeds were received. The photovoltaic project payment of 3 million was made for the south plant. Tax receipts of 3.4 million, $9 million payroll, and quite a bit of flood control activity. $22 million going out and about 31.1 coming in. There were eight investments that matured, 14 matured or were sold. 14 were purchased. The average yield sold was 1.26%, and the average yield purchased was 2.01%. So it's continuing to climb with our yield.
Through the mayor. Just so I could have him go back and clarify very, very quickly.
Yes.
On the 105.4 million dollars, that looks like a big chunk of money. Could you break that down into what is being held for outside as in Seboufka and other,
That's going to be difficult, but I'll give it a shot. I would say that almost 30% of that is going to be from outside the city's operations. So we do, we do, we do the accounting for other agencies like Net5, Sutter Butte, Flood Control Agency, Sutter Animal Services Authority, and so LAFCO as well just recently. And so we do, we do have, keep that cash in our pooled account, but through the accounting process, we're able to keep it all separate from the city's money.
And thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to ask that question because I think it's important for the citizens to understand that Uba City is not sitting on a pile of cash of 105.4 million dollars, that 30% of that is being held for other or various other operations within our community. The most important, not just our operation of the city, but also the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, which is Sutter and Butte counties. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that clarification. That's a great point.
How we wish we were sitting on that.
Yeah.
Sure. The composition of the city-held portion of those funds is mostly in bonds. About 16% is agency bonds, like Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, and so forth. US Treasuries made up 12%. Muni and state bonds make up about 3%. Corporate bonds, 15. And certificates of deposits, about 6%. LAFCO, LAFCO, LAF, Local Agency Investment Fund, and cash and other cash-like investments make up about 48% of the non-bonds. And the reason that we're holding so much in cash is we are, all that activity with the construction of the, with the Flood Control Agency has demanded that we keep a lot more cash liquid rather than investing it. The portfolio maturity distribution reflects a conservative portfolio, favors anticipated slight increases in interest rates and modest economic growth in the coming quarters, as well as large construction-related cash flows, like I just mentioned, mostly from the flood control project. And as we really get going on the Fifth Street Bridge, when the construction really ramps up fully, we'll see a lot of cash fluctuation there as well. I did include one additional slide this evening that just shows the, how the rate hikes that the Federal Reserve has implemented over the last year has affected the yield. It's kind of interesting to see that from December 31st, 2016, December 31st, 2017, with the three rate hikes that we had, how you can see that the yield is continuing to climb. I don't have my pointer, but toward the right side of the graph. And the asset management company, PFM, that is, that we utilize for the consulting on investments, their investment advisor, they are anticipating four rate hikes in the current calendar year. So remains to be seen if that, if that comes to fruition or not. But as we continue with the rate hikes, as the Fed keeps moving rates higher and higher, then the confident investors will move to more risky investments like stocks, for instance. And so the Fed yield will increase to try to pull more, the Fed will try to pull more people into their bonds, to buy their bonds. And so we'll just continue, we expect to continue to see a climb in yield rates for Treasuries, which would be reflected by the rest of the bond market as well. And with that, just wanted to know if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Spencer? No? Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right. Next, we have the Uba Sutter Lodging Association 2018 Annual Report.
Good evening, Mayor Didball. Councilmembers, Darren Gale, your Economic Growth and Public Affairs Manager. This evening, I'm before you to present the annual report for the Uba Sutter Lodging Association. This is really exciting, as I mentioned the other day in the goal-setting workshop. The city council dedicated literally over 300,000, close to 400,000 dollars to a tourism effort. And the purpose of that was to work with our lodging partners through a contract with the Chamber of Commerce to set up a dedicated source of funding for tourism for our region. Through that effort, the Uba Sutter Tourism Improvement District was established, and now we have the Uba Sutter Lodging Association. Here today is Jacob Young. Jacob is with, I just went blank, Collins Lake. I was going to say the best ice cream in the Uba Sutter region. So, but Collins Lake, yeah, just today, we joke, well, I joke every week and I ask him where the ice cream is, so. But Jacob is secretary for that board. We also have Lee Jones with the Harkey House. Lee and Bob just celebrated their 35th year in business at the Harkey House. Absolutely amazing. And we have Brianna Struckmeyer, a staff member for the Uba Sutter Lodging Association that's here. I just want to give a couple of quick details, and I'll turn over to Jacob. He'd like to talk a little bit, and then I'll come back and answer any questions you might have. But one of the things I would mention is the city, through this last budget process, set aside a 10% match for the Uba Sutter Lodging Association. To date, we have yet to give those funds to the Lodging Association. The Lodging Association has been meeting since April, so this really started in April. And there's been a transition from the chamber now to the Lodging Association. And up until really just here a few weeks ago, the Lodging Association did not have the website or the logo or any of the collateral that had been created over the past years. Recently, the Chamber of Commerce made the decision to provide that over to the Lodging Association. It's one of the things that the board had requested, and we appreciate Steve Hammerstrom, their current president, for kind of leading that effort and taking to their Board of Directors. So I will say, we're a little bit behind of where we want to be. They really wanted to be up and running here already, but Jacob will kind of explain to you a little bit more about what's going on. And again, I can answer any questions after that.
And thank you, members of the council members. My name again is Jacob Young. I work up at Collins Lake, and I am the Vice President and Treasurer of the Uba Sutter Lodging Association. And I just wanted to personally thank the whole city council for your support of the Uba Sutter Lodging Association in the formation period and over this past year. As Darren had mentioned, we had the transition of moving away from the Chamber of Commerce of managing the Uba Sutter Lodging Association. And through that transition, it didn't go as we expected, but where we are today, I'm very proud of what we have done over this past year, as we have tried to regroup as the business and lodging owners of the association. But we wouldn't have been able to do that without your continued support of this effort that we are doing as gathering and trying to market our region. So I just wanted to personally thank each of you for your support through the creation process and this year as we have been implemented. As Darren had mentioned, we have, our board is comprised of Steve Young from the Hampton Inn and Suites. He's our president. We have Lee Jones and Bob Jones here, but Lee is the representing from the Harkey House Bed and Breakfast. Gene Keable from the Comfort Inn and Suites. Darren Gale is our secretary, representing on the city of Uba City. And then we have Brenda Stranix from the Uba Sutter Economic Development Corporation, and then myself that make up the board of the Uba Sutter Lodging Association. Darren had also mentioned that we have been meeting since April of the past year and trying to get a consensus of how we're going to be moving forward. A lot of that has been laid out in the annual report that was provided. And again, I think the entire board would have wished we would have been in this position last year, coming before here, but unfortunately, it kind of derailed us a little bit of not having access to the website and all of the marketing materials that had been established for tourism-related purposes. But I want to commend the current Chamber of Commerce board for turning that over to us. Steve Hammerstrom has, we've had multiple conversations. He's been extremely supportive of our marketing efforts, and just to see the transition from where we were a year ago to where we are today. The entire Uba Sutter Lodging Association is very excited to continue to move forward where we thought we would have been a year ago and work in collaboration with the Chamber of Commerce on upcoming projects as we continue forward in that. And so one of the things that we have done during that transition period where we weren't sure if we were going to have access to those marketing-related collateral is we moved forward with a marketing agency called MC Squared based out of Chico. And so we have a contract that we're signing with them to continue to revamp our marketing efforts. And now that we do have the marketing pieces from the Chamber of Commerce, we'll be able to go live with that very shortly. Our projection is to be going live with all that by June of this year. And then we've also hired Struckmeyer Marketing to have Brianna Struckmeyer come in and do the day-to-day management for the Uba Sutter Lodging Association with that. And so the annual report did outline what we will be doing in this upcoming year, as well as what got us to this point. But I just wanted to personally come before the city council to, again, thank you for what you have done and for the continued support as we go forward for this next year to implement these different projects. And I will be available as well as Darren and Brianna if there are any questions about where we're moving forward with that. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Jacob. Any questions?
No question, but I would like to compliment you on bringing on Brianna because she was the heart and soul of establishing this and working with you in the chamber, and became very well-known through different organizations in the state on this and had all the brain trust right there, the actual action of it. And so bringing her on and her addition at this time, it was, I think, a very wise move, and that was, I think it was great.
Great.
Through the mayor. And I echo the same comments that Councilmember Cleveland has just presented, but I also, a little different approach to all of this, and that is that we have a great opportunity to grow in our community. And we see that as we are advancing forward with possibly two hotel projects in addition to what we currently have right here in Uba City. And the potential is really open right now for further expansion. There are needs here for lodging. There are needs here for lodging, and certainly, as we grow and, and try to produce a true tourism component, we have to have the lodging, we have to have that backbone for that, right here, right in Uba City, to be able to support that. And, and I think that this is the effort, this is commendable of, of the group, as they have stuck with this and supported this, from an industry, to build us to become self-supported, I think is, is commendable. To Collins Lake, who, if y'all don't know, they have about, I think it's 138 campsites, am I correct?
Yeah, we're just about, almost 300 now.
300 campsites, I was a little under on that one. And there are times when you go up to Collins Lake where they're, they're booked out. And that is amazing for our area. And folks come from Southern California, as far away as Utah, that are there, and, and then participate in different things in our community. And I really think that, that all of those efforts, not just Collins Lake, but everything else that's, that's in our area, is remarkable, and, and certainly on point to build a, produce far more tourism in our community.
Great. Any other comments?
Jacob and Darren, you both, you referenced some projects you have in the works to help move things forward. I would be curious to know if you have an example of some of those things that are, you have pending.
So probably best to have Brianna come up. In, in the...
I know.
She provided, today at the board, the board adopted this document, and also she provided the board with a schedule for this entire year of some projects, and she, probably best for Brianna to come up and explain a couple of those.
Nice to see you again. It's been a while, so it's exciting for me to kind of be back in, in the midst of these projects and, and to get up and running on some of these. So provided in your report is a list of some of the things that are up and coming. But just to give you a brief overview, really getting back on track with marketing efforts, and the core of the marketing efforts, including the website and the social media, is at the forefront of priorities. So we're working with MC Squared, our marketing agency out of Chico, like Jacob mentioned, to get those redesigned, kind of rebranded up and running soon. Along with that, with our management district plan of the TID, it calls out some specific areas. So we're looking at specifically categories like sports management or sports tourism. So we'll be doing some research and some campaign development in marketing efforts in the sports industry, as well as addressing some visitor transportation needs, and how we can work with the local community, or work with different entities to provide better transportation, to create package-type trips for people when they come here. So those are kind of two new areas that we haven't really looked at before. Other things include media tours, a visitor's guide for 2019, so an annual visitor's guide that will be starting again next year, but will need to be planned and designed in this year, as well as a community ambassador program, so we can actually create a marketing effort, a curriculum, to where anyone in the community who is interested can participate in undergoing education and curriculum-based knowledge of tourism in Uba Sutter, so that we can create a group of ambassadors to help welcome in visitors, let them know what there is to do in the area. So I'm sure everyone knows very well that, you know, when you, when you go through any community, you stop at restaurants, you stop at gas stations, you stay at hotels and, and different lodging entities, and you always ask, you know, the first face that you see, what is there to do in the area? So there's, so interest in training and making sure that our forefront hospitality service members are up to date and can give a visitor a really wonderful overview and insight and as to what there is to do, so that we can provide the best experience possible. So it's kind of the first year in a nutshell, in a sense.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
And through the mayor, I think that Brianna needs to go ahead and, and work out some type of contractual agreement with our Parks Department for the new, use of the new bus, which handles 24, 24 passengers. So we'd like to pay that thing off as quickly as we can.
Exactly. Any further questions?
Just, just have to, thank you, Brianna, and welcome back.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? If not, we have a motion to adopt a resolution.
I'll, through the mayor.
Yeah.
I'll make the staff's recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Right, thank you. Okay. Next, we have business from city council. We will start with Councilmember Buckland.
Thank you very much, mayor. I met with Senator Kimla Harris's staff. Senator Harris is fairly new to the US Senate, and so they're reaching out to all of us, as, as many, I know many of you have, have had meetings. I think it's important that we're able to meet and ask for certain things, and, and I know that my list ran about half an hour long of different things that, that we would need. But certainly, on the forefront is support for infrastructure, to include our water, sewer, our, the safety of our levees, our transportation needs. And I went on down the list, and I would bore y'all with that half-hour rendition of what I gave staff for that. But I also asked for a meeting in April with Senator Harris, and so they're working, trying to work for Uba City members that will be back at cap to cap, to be able to meet directly with the Senator. So I'm, I'm looking forward if we can get that, that meeting in place while we're back in Washington DC here in about, I think it's four weeks. Also had a Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency meeting, and I know that both Councilmember Cleveland and I were at that, and we're looking, trying to advance some agreements into the future, and just putting pieces in play for the future maintenance and repair rehabilitation of our levees over time for districts one and nine here in, in Sutter County. It's an important process that we start this, to allow those districts to determine how and, and where they're going to fund that, that mechanism, because we have now provided a Cadillac in, of a 200-year protection system for our levees. It would be, I think, unconscionable to even think that we would not have a mechanism in play to build a continued maintenance and, and rehabilitation, repair, should anything go wrong with those levees into the future. So, so this process will start, there will be about, I think it's eight public meetings that will, that will occur. So we're looking forward to being involved in those. I did miss the, the Secog meeting down in Sacramento last Thursday, because I was in Monterey for the CalCog meeting. As a representative of this, I am the only representative of our six-county region on CalCog for the Secog region. And so as we're in Monterey, we're, we're talking about specific things like the ongoing fight to repeal Senate Bill One, which is the gas tax. And also looking at proposals on what's going to happen with Proposition, Proposition 69, which we've had discussions on in the past. There seems to be some, some discussion, and certainly, the opposition is mounting, and, and this looks like it's going to be a pretty close fight on what's going to happen with those funding opportunities. Absent that, that funding through SB One, we need to look as a community to what we can do to build a, to progress forward with our infrastructure, specifically to roadways for maintenance. So that conversation will continue. I look for community input as to how we will, will look at this and, and deal with this issue, especially specific to SB One, and also to Proposition 69. If anybody needs any, any more information on that, it's available on, online, but I would provide some links to that also. And then, along with the other council members, I had the absolute honor of attending the Bakaai Parade this last Saturday, the 138th Bakaai Parade. It only sprinkled for about five minutes on the, on the parade, and also attended the, the Larry Booth reception over in Marysville, and then also the Hop Sing Society Dinner, in which a number of electeds also attended. But it's an opportunity for all of us to see and support the Chinese community, and certainly what they have provided to us, starting, you know, way, way back in the mid-1800s in building our community and, and kind of moving forward with what they really desire to build a, to project into the future, about the past and, and what they can provide now and also into the future. So with that, I'm done.
Great, thank you. And then we have Councilmember Cordoza.
We'll start off the meetings. We kind of double up on things, I'll be quick about it. Attended Lafco meeting, Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. We had our cities priority and goals workshop, that was real fun. We got a strategy plan for the next year. Uba Sutter Transit Authority and the council, we all met with Senator Harris's aide, gave all our thoughts. Also, for chamber events, we only had a couple last two weeks. We had a ribbon cutting for Feather River Brewing Supply, and then I had my monthly ambassadors meeting. For city and community events, we attended the Uba Sutter Farm Bureau Spring Fling Dinner. That was a great, fun turnout. Councilman Harris and I attended the Uba Sutter Arts Dinner and Concert, had a Irish stew, first time for me, I thought we were having corned beef, but we had Irish stew. Councilman Cleveland and Vice Mayor Harris and I, we attended the graduation ceremony for our fire department for the hazmat technicians course. So now our, seven of our firefighters, Uba City Fire Department, are hazmat technicians. So besides protecting us, they can go throughout the state. That was a great ceremony. Attended Gallagher St. Patty's Day Social Event. Blue Star Moms helped pack packages. And there was also dinner, I had to skip out on dinner, was going somewhere else, but we packed packages to send back for the troops. Went to Habitat Humanities Ribbon Cutting. This is house number 11 out of 35. They have three right now in construction, 69% done, and this is to help folks get into affordable housing. So they're, they're halfway, they're halfway there, and, and they're continuing on. And like I said, it was Bakaai Weekend, so everything was Bakaai. And then I just would like to give a special thanks to Mark Boomgarden and Valley Truck and Tractor for loaning us the gators for the parade. It's always fun riding. Anyway, thank you very much.
You. We've got Councilmember Cleveland.
Yes, it was very busy last couple of weeks. I will say, the first one, I started off, I think it was on the eighth or something, with Regional Water Authority going down and trying to advocate for preserving our water, and just conjunctive use, how they're going to, sometimes you have to take it from one area to help another, because they don't have it, and, but then they have, they have surface water, but they don't have groundwater abilities. And so you figure out how to accommodate making water available for different types of, times of the year. And then, of course, there's advocacy on bills for or against creating our own bills to make sure that the state does not impose regulations on us without our input and fight back on most of the time. And mostly, it's fighting, trying to keep it a local decision, rather than the state of California just coming in and saying, hey, this is what you're going to do. And there's been some successes, some not, but we're, we're definitely having an impact. Then Lafco, a local area formation, I can't remember, I'm always forgetting that one. But it's, has to do with special districts, attended that meeting. Mosquito Vector, I'm going to be taking actually a class, I think it's in this room or over at the, no, it's actually over at the vets hall, veterans hall, on mosquitoes and some of the chemicals they use, and I'm going to be learning a little bit about that, and in the depth of education on it. I do want to remind people, if you have mosquitoes, not this time of year, but as it gets into warmer time of year, you can call the mosquito vector, if you're going to have an outdoor event, they will come and spray your property, your area, inspect, and, and in advance to make sure you don't get eaten up. And that's pretty much anywhere in, especially Sutter County, which we advocate for. So you can do that, and they will be there. I was on a phone call for the Sacramento Valley Division League of California Cities. We, that is where all the cities in the state of California get together and do the same thing, type of a thing that we do with the Regional Water Authority. We review bills and things that the Assemblymen and Senators are putting forward, and actually even some of the stuff that the Governor's Office does. We review them, look at them in different categories, and try to decide whether they're good, bad, or absolutely ugly. And most of the time, they're bad and ugly. So we are always having to figure out how to, they're different categories. You can say you can oppose unless amended, you can say support if amended, which is a softer way of saying the same thing, to where there's more good things than bad in it, just the nuances of support. And so we had our, our phone call this time, but we're going to be in April doing some very strong advocacy for indecisions on which bills to support or to fight. So we did have the goals, goals and priorities setting that we had this last week on Tuesday, and we found out that according to last year's goals, the review is we're right on target. We have not gotten distracted with anything else, and that we're actually have material improvement to the community based upon our priorities and goals. So we, we're going to double down on those priorities and add a few more efforts on it. And as you see around our community, there are good developments, jobs are being created and redevelopment, and we're going to continue to advocate those directions. Yeah, a lot of meetings. And we had a special meeting after, also a closed session. Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency, as John Buckland said, Gilser was canceled, the Uba Sutter Transit Authority, we're talking about having to have electric buses in, in the future of the state of California, and they're going from, the buses costing about $600,000 to $700,000 to actually costing $1 million a bus by going all-electric, a million plus. And we're just going, how in the world is that going to happen? And so we're, we're, we're having to deal with that, and that's statewide. We also had, Regional Waste Management Authority was canceled. As they said, Spring Fling Farm Bureau fundraiser, that was a blast. The Bakaai Weekend, as was stated. And I also attended the Blue Star Packing and the dinner, and then hazmat graduation, that was a regional graduation, where all of the, the fire, the police, the CHP, even, I think they had somebody from Beal there. think they had somebody from Beal there, to where we had a very large class in being educated on hazmat. And Yuba City has the main machinery for that. We are the hub for that in the area. So it's a fantastic thing to have it housed in our community, the major hazmat location. And then there's, I think, one in Redding, and that's Northern California, so we are it. I commend our fire department and our chief for working so hard to get that in our community. Other than that, another couple of busy weeks coming up, and looking forward to them.
Great. Thank you. Next, we have Vice Mayor Harris.
Thank you. I spent most of my time staring at the ceiling of my bedroom, my turn in the barrel, being sick with this flu that's going around. But I did manage to go to a few things, a lot of which has already been mentioned. I'll start with just echoing what Councilman Cleveland said about the hazardous material tech spec, if you will, class that we had at, our city hosted out at the water treatment plant. There were literally people from all over California, especially Northern California. Some instructors came up from L.A. to train our people and people from all over the place. And the fact that our city took a leadership role in that and is being recognized as such is commendable, and I was proud and happy to be there to show support for those folks. It's a four-week class, just to get to the point where we showed up, and then some of them extended on even further for two more weeks. And I know for a fact that it's not an easy feat to do that, so it takes a lot of work. There are the guys that you have blue or green foam coming across the highway and things are dying in your site. They're the guys you call to mitigate that and take care of it. And so it's very, very important and relevant. So that's good. Again, priority and goals workshop, we attended that, and I'm always impressed with our staff, our city manager, and our apartment heads and their staffs, the job that they do. We had to spend all day sitting around a table, just bouncing ideas back and forth and interacting with one another. Oftentimes, it's kind of like this, we're more of a formal setting. But when we get there, we roll up our sleeves and get to openly communicate and move things forward for the city, it's really encouraging, and I'm happy to be a part of that team with these folks. One thing, Bakaai was mentioned also, always a fun time, it's a very interesting thing. One thing that I noticed conspicuously present was Beal Air Force Base. They have several representatives, they're high-ranking colonels there. Andy Clark is currently our vice commander, and when Colonel Broadwell transitions to his new role in Washington, D.C., Colonel Clark will be taking over as our new Air Force, Beal Air Force Base commander. Very good guy, excuse me, very professional, and looking forward to seeing him around more, along with the rest of his staff. We also are going to, we're in the works, I believe it's the first meeting in April, Darren, we're planning on recognizing and showing some appreciation for the fact that some local law enforcement leaders have taken over. One, Chief Chris Sacks over in Marysville, he's taking over, moved up in the slot, and he's now our Marysville Police Chief, and we want to have a reception for him at our next council meeting in April, recognizing him and showing our appreciation for him. I mean, we're literally, it's a Yuba Sutter community, we all know that, we all go by that. But now we're literally building a new bridge between the two cities, and I think it's very poignant and apropos to take advantage of that opportunity, to show that partnership that we are looking forward to sharing with them moving forward. Also, my replacement over the California Highway Patrol, Rodney Ellison, he comes to us from down in Headquarters, Headquarters Command, he's taken over my chair about a month ago or so. So we're going to combine the two and have a little shindig out in the courtyard, if you will, the next court meeting. Farm Bureau, always a good time. I also met with Senator Harris's staff, I like the sound of that. But anyway, it was a joke. Come on. Anyway, she was very receptive and very, and anything we said, again, I kind of, we beat her down with infrastructure and roads and flood control and everything else, and she just kind of took it all in, and I'm sure she's heard it before, but we're really pushing for that, and they're very open to anything that we want to bring forward and listen so we can work together on making things happen for us. Let's see, I think that's about it, other than Yuba Sutter Arts Bureau, those folks, always working hard. The main thing that's coming in the works is we're working on a revamping and resurrecting our community fireworks display for 4th of July. I know that went way a long time ago, I think about 10 years ago, when I was a kid, they shot them off the island in Ellis Lake. Now we're going to, hopefully, we're going to get something going for that, and a joint venture between the two counties in Marysville and Yuba City to shoot the fireworks somewhere near the boat dock and the river bottoms. We're hoping to do that, and it sounds like it could be a very good community and fun event. So that is it for now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. I'm not going to repeat a lot of it. Yeah. So, but I also did meet with Senator Harris's staff, also requested a meeting while we were, while we're going to be in D.C. in April. So hopefully, we'll hear back soon. The goals and priorities session that we held, again, just really nice to just roll up the sleeves and get to work and focus and see the vision for the city and how we can implement and put those in place. All of our city staff, directors, all the way down, you know, and what I really enjoyed is having that special invite to all of our commissions. Our commissions are an integral part of what we do, and we go through, you know, all of our interviews and appoint folks to our commissions, and it's really important that they are involved in our goals and priorities so that they can help make that vision and go out there and meet with the public and do what they need to do as commissioners. So that was really important, and I'm glad to see many of them there. We will hold another follow-up meeting with all of the commissioners and have them all attend so we can present the final product of those goals and priorities so that they know what's being viewed and how they can step up and do their part as commissioners. Bakaai Parade and festivities, beautiful cultural event. I think this year, just from the looks of it, seemed a lot larger in the past years. You know, it was a really wonderful turnout, and just to have everybody come out and support the Chinese folks and as they support our community as well. So the Farm Bureau Spring Fling Dinner, lots of fun. And then we are also gearing up for the summer at City Hall. So we're getting there to get the applications from the students, do those interviews, and see how many students we get into the summers program. We're hoping for a great turnout. It's an exciting program. I've been actually getting a lot of requests if older folks can get into the civic engagement. So maybe we'll have a nuance of how to get our adults involved in civic engagement and not just our high school students, but it's been a great program, and I know it's being talked about. So let's see how it goes. Aside from that, I think Councilmember Buckland wanted to --
Yeah, through the mayor. You know, our community is blessed to have individuals really add to the quality of life within our community, add to the growth of our young people, and certainly music is one of those components that is instrumental to growth of individuals. And we had, a gentleman lived here that provided about 35 years of his life to providing song and music, stuff that he wrote. He was self-taught, an inspiration to all of us, and someone that reached every level of our community from young to old. He passed away, and I would ask the mayor to close in the memory of John Carter III, who was a Yuba City resident, but also a hero to many through his song and inspiration to the growth of our community.
Okay. With that being said, we will close tonight, adjourn our meeting with memory of John Carter III, and so our meeting is closed for tonight.